The May 10, 2021 meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board will come to order. At this time, the Chair recognizes Mr. James Harris for our invocation.
I'm Mr. Frank. Most gracious having the Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity that we could meet for our May 10, Rockingham County Planning Board meeting. Be with us tonight is review the particular cases in that we're reviewing. Give us the knowledge and skills to make decisions that are representative for the applicant and also to Rockingham County citizens. We ask these things in your precious name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. At this time, are there any changes to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda as written.
So I move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the agenda is adopted as written. The next item on the agenda is approval of the May 12 minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the minutes as written for April 12. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. Again, there being no opposition. The minutes are approved. The following are the procedures for hearings before the planning board. Each case will be presented to the board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, those who have signed up to do so will be granted the opportunity to speak against or in support of the proposal. If needed, the board chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. After the public comment period is completed, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting procedures. Any and all persons who would like to speak regarding any case being heard by the planning board but signed the case roster prior to the beginning of the meeting. Since this is a quasi judicial hearing, each speaker must be sworn in by the chairman. Additionally, each speaker must be recognized by the chairman prior to speaking. Unless otherwise specified, all testimony, evidence, and comments should be directed to the board chairperson or presiding board member. This hearing is a quasi judicial evidentiary hearing. That means it's like a court hearing. State law sets specific procedures and rules concerning how this board must make its decision. These rules are different from other types of land use decisions like rezoning cases. Excuse me. The board's discretion is limited. The board must base its decision upon competent, relevant, and substantial evidence in the record. A quasi judicial decision is not a popularity contest. It is a decision constrained by the standards and the ordinance and based on the facts presented. If you will be speaking as a witness, please focus on the facts and standards, not personal preference or opinion. Participation is limited. This meeting is open to the public. Everyone is welcome to watch. Parties withstanding have rights to participate fully. Parties may present evidence, call witnesses, and make legal arguments. Parties are limited to the applicant, the local government, and individuals who can show they will suffer special damages. Other individuals may serve as witnesses when called by the board. General witness testimony is limited to facts, not opinions. For certain topics, this board needs to hear opinion testimony from expert witnesses. These topics include projections about impacts on property values and projections about impacts of increased traffic. Individuals providing expert opinion must be qualified as experts and provide the factual evidence upon which they base their opinion. At this time, we're called upon Community Development Director Carrie Spencer to introduce this case, which was continued from April 12.
As you said, Paul, this case has been continued from April 12. We discussed earlier, Paul, the idea of taking action on the previous application before moving forward with this one as far as the court orders' direction to us.
Do you want us to do that now?
I think it would be wise to do before we move further on the case. Although we've been looking at these cases concurrently, I think it would be good to go ahead and have that done for the record.
In the previous application from Wendy Cheek, she applied for a special use permit to operate a rural guest establishment. The board approved the application, and it appears as though Lawrence and Maria Plot objected or appealed our decision to the Rockingham County Superior Court. That case was stylized as 20CVS 2243. I'm not going to read the whole court order into the record, although it will be entered into the record, and instead go to the judge's order, which was issued for the appeal. Judge Susan Bray of the Rockingham County Superior Court wrote as follows. "Now therefore, it is hereby ordered to judge then to decree that this matter be and hereby is remanded to the Rockingham County Planning Board with the instruction that respondent Cheek's application for a special use permit to operate a rural guest establishment by placing campers upon the Cheek property shall be forthwith denied, and that any special permit that is issued for that purpose be revoked." That being said, I now move that we, that this board revoke any permit that's been issued as a rural guest establishment. Is there a second?
Chair, I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to revoke any permit issued to place campers upon the Cheek property operating as a rural guest establishment be revoked. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the board unanimously orders that the planning department revoke any such permit.
Thank you, Paul. I appreciate your, yeah, and the planning department has not issued any sort of documentation in permit form. In fact, hasn't, the only thing that we've issued is a decision of the board, which is now revoked formally from your action tonight. So the applicant is seeking a special use permit to allow, instead of campers in a rural guest establishment because the standards for that request were specifically referred to recreational vehicles. And so by this court order, staff recommended that the applicant come back with a new application to do the same operation that she was doing before with the six, now we call them travel trailers. Recreational vehicles and travel trailers are synonymously used in our ordinance, to recognize the fact that they are travel trailers and to interpret the use as a travel trailer park in a residential agricultural district. One of the main requirements of that special use permit is a site plan, which the applicant submitted last month and which staff and the board agreed together to ask the applicant to return with a better version of. Their site plan consists of a packet that I sent, that I gave you in a sort of miniaturized form in the staff report and tonight, a full-size copy of the plans as they were submitted. The property, total property acreage as a reminder, is 27 acres. The applicant's site plan details the section, portion of the acreage that she intends to use as, for this use. The property is located in the rural transition land class, which by the land use plan, which is the Rockingham County, serves as the Rockingham County Comprehensive Plan by the definition of the 160D requirement to have a comprehensive plan. The purpose of this class is to accommodate existing residential neighborhoods and to balance the need to retain the area's rural character and beauty with the strong demand of continued residential development, lands where residential development is grouped in existing neighborhoods, and crossroad community settlements where it will occur in similar neighborhoods and settlements during the following 20-year period, and lands with limited commercial development with an emphasis on mixed use. So that statement at the end of the characteristics of this land class do envision some non-residential use mixed with the residential use. The property is located here in the, in this quadrant of the county. I know you've seen this before. I just want to go through it quickly. The next slides that I have for you are the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. As you see, the area is identified as a 5.7-acre parcel. Now I'm on that, the handout that I gave you that has the full, the full-size slides. And I will, I'll go through these for the benefit of the audience and the attendees as well as yourselves. The green line indicates that the use is located 243 feet to the property line, which is satisfies the setback requirement of the development standards. The uses that will be included in this request are bathhouse, parking areas, power supplies located, parking areas, and exit, ingress and egress. The septic system has been located, the bathhouse is located, the campers are located. This is a smaller scale that shows the entire site. There are other plans that show more details. And the required recreation area, which is on another slide, identified as, at least I have to go to, the size of the recreation area is identified and meets the requirements of the special use permit development standards. .9 acres is the residential recreational area. The applicant has shown that the distance of 50 feet to the property line, which is a required setback for this use, this slide indicates that the use is all contained outside of that 50-foot buffer or inside of it, if you will. This slide, I believe, is just to show a little more clarity without the topography so you can see where the use is intended. Parking areas, again, bathhouse, more detail. Maybe a repetitive slide, and I apologize. The applicant is aware of the fact that the roadway that she's indicated as a 12-foot wide roadway, if any roadway is to be used for two-way traffic, she will have to come back and request a variance to that 20-foot requirement for two-way traffic. So my advice to you would be for your, if you should take action that approves this site plan, that you approve it with a condition that that road length has to be, has to be either changed or varied, changed or requested as a variance from the standards. This just, excuse me, shows the intended area for the use on a topographical map. The length, these slides, the following slides show the distance between the campers to meet the requirement, the required development standards, which are in your packet. They, and I've reviewed the site plan, and it does meet the development standards. And if you'd like to follow, one recreation area, 8%, trailers separated from each other and other structures by at least 15 feet. So the way these slides read, the green line distance is here on the side. I don't know if you can see my cursor. The, for instance, in this case, these campers are 38 feet apart.
They're what, Carrie? They're how many feet?
38 feet. And each, the applicant has submitted a different plan for each separation distance, just to be clear, I suppose. Separation between the camper that's closest to the bathhouse is 42 feet, 51 feet between camper two and three, 689 feet between the camper that is the closest to the neighboring, neighboring buildings, meeting the required separation distance.
All right. Before you change that slide, is the lot showing 20210, is that the Plot property?
I believe the Plot property is to the east. Am I, am I?
231.
Okay. No, you're right. It is, it is to the west. So this, this distance of 689 feet meets the requirement of the location of all existing proposed buildings and structures within the site, between those buildings and existing buildings on adjacent properties or to either side be within 500 feet. This is a, another distance between the westernmost structure and the nearest property to the west, which is 603 feet, meeting that 500-foot separation distance, which is the Plot's property. 728 feet from, I think we're just sort of going around the clock to show that the 500-foot separation distance is met. 614 feet from the nearest structure located at the address 647, Low Road. This is the recreational area I sort of jumped to before, showing you that the recreational area is 15.79% of the site, which meets the 8% requirement. The key difference between the, a traditional travel trailer park, which, by the way, this use is listed as travel trailer park or recreational, non-permanent vehicles, including tenting and other forms of weather-protected, covered camping, which is why I think that this use is best interpreted to be the closest to what the applicant is asking for. The applicant's application is limiting up, limiting the vintage campers, which we are calling travel trailers, to three to four for use as Airbnb guest quarters. You see, if the barn, the barn may later be used for possible small wedding venue, but not sure. If that were the case, the applicant would have to come back to amend the site plan and the special use permit to include that use. She's just was being forthcoming in the, in the application, although we are not approving that at this time. So it's a may later be used. And when you condition, when you use the site plan as a condition, you'll see that it does not include a wedding venue area.
Okay.
So she would have to come back to ask for that again. I think, are there questions about the site or the standards? We'll say the environmental health department will approve or has, if they haven't already approved, a septic system sized for the number of campers that have been requested. And that is not a condition necessarily of the special use permit. That's a reassurance to you that, that is a standard requirement that will be, will be met to satisfy the health and safety requirement of wastewater.
Okay. Will the finals in this be subject to TRC review?
Only if you condition it upon that. Otherwise, the DOT, environmental health, and Jason, soil and water conservation have been asked to look at it. It's-
Have they made a decision? No.
They're all, they're all favorable, they all have reviewed it favorably. Actually, the chief building inspector has also reviewed the plan and had no comments.
Good or bad?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, it started as a, we need to huddle to make sure that whatever health and safety requirements there might be for a use like this need to be accommodated. And if anybody's regulation had to be interpreted in order to ensure that that was the case because there were, because it's a unusual use, I would say. And I won't say unusual. I take that back from our 1986 and then changed over the years, UDO, hadn't accommodated such uses as this. They also haven't accommodated uses like tobacco bards and vaping sales as different than tobacco sales. So lots of, lots of things.
Carrie, I do have a question.
Sure.
Since this is a relatively new phenomenon that we're starting to see in the county, what is the main difference between a travel trailer site and what we all think of as a mobile home park? I mean, there's-
A mobile home park is, is a series of mobile homes that people are dwelling in permanently. A travel trailer park is typically a place where people will pull their recreational vehicle up for a time, a period of time, not to exceed 30 days, so as not to be a dwelling, a permanent dwelling, but a place to temporarily bring a recreational vehicle. The recreational vehicle stays on its wheels, basically, and typically leaves the park after it's finished with its visit. A mobile home park does not. A mobile home park is a single-family home that is located on a site in the park for permanent dwelling.
Does the county, i.e. environmental health, typically come out and check like they would a mobile home park every so often?
Yes. Absolutely. They have, they have, they check both mobile home parks and travel trailer parks for, the mobile home parks and RV parks are checked by environmental health from time to time.
And I assume this also conforms to the intent of the land use plan to encourage, do things that encourage tourism and-
It does. There is a, and the, the land use plan talks a lot about our recreational, outdoor recreational assets, and this encourages tourist lodgings for visiting the county.
Any other questions for Carrie?
Yes, I have one. Carrie, it stated here that the, unlike rural guest establishment plans, limited placements of campers up to six months. Is that, is that right? And if so, at six months, can they renew?
That is my, that is part of my, trailer spaces are rented by the day. Are you, are you referring to the staff report just-
I'm just looking at your staff findings and recommendations.
Yeah. Okay. That was, that was for the purposes of showing the difference between the rural guest establishment and the travel trailer park. The rural guest establishment was interpreted by the courts to mean a more permanent type dwelling.
Okay, I got you.
Campers and, and mobile homes.
Well, even in 30-day intervals, can they renew an extended stay or you gotta go?
Yes. In it, with this use, with the travel trailer, they can. They can rent by the day. In fact, they, they have to rent by the day. That's the very last requirement in the development standards.
So maximum length of time they could stay?
Not in this particular special use permit development standards. The other difference between this use and what the applicant is proposing is that the applicant and owner of the property will own the travel trailers, campers, which we are calling travel trailers. So she will own them, that's her intent, to own them, so that they won't be coming on and off of the property like you would see in a typical RV park. But the, the folks staying in the campers will be limited to short stays. They're by satisfying the rental. Trailer space is rented by the day. Doesn't fit neatly to.
My recommendation to the board would be that ownership of those trailers be one of the conditions.
Is that intended to, just to reassure?
To discourage long-term stays.
And to differentiate a typical travel trailer park from-
Right.
-her use because a typical travel trailer park would have trailers coming in and out of the-
That would help ensure we're just dealing with short-term rentals. Any other questions? Thank you, Carrie.
Sure. And I'm available for more questions.
Okay. Members, I'd remind you that as you consider the testimony in this case, and we'll be calling the applicant up here in just a minute, that these conditions have, all the conditions in the UDO have to be met, as does the following, that the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as- and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or promote the public health, safety, and general welfare; that the use or development complies with all the required regulations and standards of this ordinance, and with all other applicable regulations; that the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or enhance the value of contiguous property; or that the use or development is a public necessity; and that the use or development conforms with the general plans for the land use and development of Rockingham County as embodied in this chapter and in the Rockingham County Development Guide. So keep those things in mind as you listen to the testimony and be sure that what you hear in the way of competence, substantial, and relevant evidence helps you make your decision as to whether these conditions will be met. With that, Wendy Cheek, please. Would you please put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand? Left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth so help you God? Okay, please take the podium and for the record, state your name and address.
Wendy Cheek, 651 Low Road, Madison, North Carolina. Yeah, but can I, am I able to work it? Okay.
Mice. We have mice. Okay. And besides what's in your application, what is it that you would like the planning board to know?
I just want to clarify exactly what it is I'm wanting to do and just give you a little bit of insight on why. That's okay. So first of all, I had this, I have a vintage camper. I had one vintage camper, and, and that has been a passion of mine to have, to restore a vintage camper. And I had so many people, like, interested in it and wanting to use it, and I thought, well, it would be, you know, how great would it be to be able to bring something different to Rockingham County and set up some vintage campers for people to stay in? So I went to Asheville. Asheville has a big vintage camper park that they have 10 vintage campers. It's called Junebug Retro Resort. I think I mentioned it the last time. And I went up there and visited them to see what their campground, you know, their vintage camper resort was like, and to just get some ideas from them. And so they have large scale. I, I personally don't have that kind of money to do something large scale, but I just was wanting to set up three. And I have three, and I actually have, they're not all finished yet. I've got one that's pretty much completely ready to be used. The, and I got another one within probably 30 days will be ready. And then I got one that'll take a while, but this, you know, just bringing something new and exciting to the county, a place where people could come and just have a weekend stay, not, I don't look at this as something where people's gonna be staying, not even a week, but like just a, a long weekend or a few days, because these campers are only set up for two people. And, and they'll have water and electricity to them. And I'm gonna run them through Airbnb, which Airbnb is a very secure way to have guests come onto your property. So I have to okay every, every guest that comes through. And currently, right now, the upstairs of my house is Airbnb, and I started that last May, and I've had 15 guest stays since then, even through COVID. And a couple of them were people coming into the area to work, were a little bit longer stays, which the, the vintage camper would not accommodate those folks. But a lot of the folks, I'd say 80% of them have been people coming in from either somewheres within our state or from out of, out of state, just coming in to visit the area, to just go somewheres different. They see, they see it on Airbnb, and they see my farm, and they just want somewheres quiet to come and stay. And so that's my whole, how I advertise it, is a quiet farm stay. But these folks have been going into the, to Madison, they've been going to our parks. I mean, they're really spending a lot of time in our county, and it's, it's exciting when somebody from Maryland or Kentucky or even Raleigh come to do stuff in our county. And with, through Airbnb, the county gets 3% from every stay that I have. So not only are people coming in and spending money here, but you guys, like, it's giving back a revenue, and 3% may not sound like a lot, but that, you know, that's added on to each stay that I have. And, and it's, and if all three of them were booked, it's six people. So it's, it's not gonna be a high-traffic business, and it's very important to me, like, the area for the campers is actually a half-acre area, but I've got a big acre, I mean, a big area for people to use if they wanted to picnic out there or just sit outside. But it's not gonna be people bringing in their campers or, I, I don't want that, and nor would I ever have that. But this is the only way that we could, you know, try to ask for the permit. I've done a lot of grading work out. It does look actually very beautiful right now, but, you know, I'm limited to, I'm limited to a certain area so I can keep everything looking like the farm, like it, it will not change, because that's why people are coming, because of how it looks and that whole farm appeal and that, you know, quiet, quiet stay. I did, is this working?
Wendy, or, a T representative is gonna help you, help show you how the...
See, because I put, I developed some folders, and I've got some views of the property if you were standing where the campers are and looking at the property. I've got, I've got pictures of what the shower facility will look like. I've got some pictures of my campers. I've got the privacy, like, I, I planted 96 trees to create a privacy line between me and the plots and to create an area where, because the original...
Can you see that picture?
Yeah, because the original complaint... The original complaint there for, from them was they did not want to see it when they were coming in to their home, because they have easement across my property to get to their house. So they did not want to really look at my campers, which, they're gonna be super cute, but that's beside the point. I'm gonna...
Take your word for it.
So they're already pretty cute, but one of them needs painting, but, so what I did is to try to remedy that so they wouldn't have to see it, is I, first off, I planted 64 six-foot trees that'll grow and create privacy. Is this ready for me? Where do you go?
If we could just see that photo of the effort you made to, with the privacy line, that's one.
Where, where do they come up at?
Double-click it.
Okay.
And then double-click the, the photos as you're...
Okay. So I've got several here. These are, these are some of the trees that, so that's looking back up the driveway, like the easement. So you can see where the trees start there. Is there, is there any way that you can just go through them or you have to click each one?
If you hover the cursor to the right, see the little, no, further down?
Oh, right here.
There it is. See, no, for, right in the middle of the slide, there's a, there's a, a triangle, an arrow that will light up to the right-hand edge and halfway down. See, it just, there you go.
All right. So here, this view here is, this is the other 26. These are only, now, right now, these are only two foot, but I planted 26 up on the property line. And then that far road you see in the distance there, that is the plot easement across my property. Here is all the trees that I planted along the easement to create that privacy. And I could only plant them, because that's a, that's a pretty steep hill right there. So if I go, if I planted them any further down, it was gonna lose its purpose of creating a privacy, because the driveway is, would be up above them, so. And here is another view from up at the top of the property lines. Let me see. And there's just a more recent picture when I was, of the trees there. So those, they, they don't look real big, but they're right at six foot. And then there's looking back up, see how the hill is? And there's some more where I... And then this is standing on the drive, looking back towards my property or their easement, which, and you can see all the trees down at the bottom where they come out of their property, and that, that'll block their view coming out. There's a little bit closer up. And that, their area back there in the back on this picture is the area I cleared for the vintage campers. And just more, yeah. I think that's all of those. And then I've just, I actually have, let me go back here just a minute. So here is, I just want you to see this. This is a view from, so this is standing where the campers are, where the campers would be. This is looking back towards Mr. Plot's property, so...
Is his property beyond those trees?
His property is, is where the tree, like, the small tree line starts there in the front, is where his property starts. Mine is all the field. I got, I cut 10 acres of hay off. And then that was just a view from kinda his, where he comes out of his driveway, looking back up to where the campers are gonna be. And see, all that is, that front area you see on the right is gonna be, is like the recreational area. And this is just looking from Mr. Plot's easement back towards my property. We didn't see that one. So here, here's a view from where my property actually starts. And the, there's a road to the right and a road to the left. The left, the left road is his easement, which is still my property. And the right side is my drive that I take in. And I have a couple pictures with where the campers will be, so you'll get an idea. So that's the view people will have coming in.
I think at this point, Wendy, we're more interested in, in the steps you've taken to...
Okay.
Build up the privacy, address the privacy issue. So we're satisfied with that.
Okay. Yeah, if you want to see...
I do have a question.
Okay.
What type of trees did you plant?
They're called big giants. They're called big giants. I don't know the official name, but they're, they're an evergreen.
So are they like a Leyland cypress?
They're, they're not quite like a Leyland cypress. They have more of a lacy kind of, they're a lot prettier, actually, than Leyland cypress is. Yeah. Are you interested in seeing anything else? Because I got lots of pictures.
No, I think that covers it.
I, I wish that there was a, actually, a good category for this, this project. It, it has been very exciting, but it became very stressful for a little while. But I, I really think it would be something great for the county. And yes, like, I will make, have a little bit of income coming in from it for, because I'm retiring in four more years from the fire service, so it's not like, it's gonna be a huge money thing, but it's just, it's, I love to cater to people, so I think this would be, it's just a fun way to bring something that is different for our county and have people interested in coming to, to stay, because I've already had an interest in, in the campers. People want to know when I'm gonna have them set up, and I'm like, well, I don't know, you may just be able to take it and camp somewheres else. You know, like, I, I couldn't say, yeah, well, I may or may not, but I know there is an interest there for sure.
Are there any questions for Ms. Cheek?
And I, I would like to say one other thing. So at no point did it would, was I ever trying to do anything that would upset my, my neighbors and that, no, I did not think that it would be something that would upset them, because I'm way off the road and I'm back there, like, I can't even see anybody's house from the second story of my house. Like, I can't see the plots. I actually had a picture that I took from, I can't see nobody. So the only time people really see me, see my place, is either they're on my property or they have to walk out to the edge of the property line to see stuff. And, and my mission is to keep it very farm, very rural, very quiet, and where you don't even know, I guarantee, nobody here has known how many guests I've had come in that stayed in my home in the last few months. And I just, you know, I do feel bad that people were being upset over it, but I also feel like that it's not, it's not causing a hindrance to anyone to...
No questions? All right. Thank you very much, Wendy. Yeah, after the, we're gonna hear from speakers supporting your case, and then we're gonna hear from the opposition, after which you'll be given an opportunity for rebuttal. And finally, the opposition will be given a chance for rebuttal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie, do I just, do I have to eject it or... You can leave it there in case there are future questions. We'll just make sure that you, that you got it before the end of the night.
Richard, is it Krist? Christie. Yep. Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth so help you God? Okay, please go to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Richard Christie, 624 Low Road, Madison. I'd just like to say that Wendy has done nothing but bring value to the neighborhood and improve the appearance since she's been there, and I would highly recommend you consider approving her request.
Okay. Are you, are you an adjacent neighbor?
I live directly across the road.
Okay, so you are a neighbor then?
30 acres with quite a bit of road front each on the other side.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Christie?
Mr. Christie, hello?
Mr. Kristi, how long have you lived at this residence?
I have lived at this residence only since 2006. However, I've lived on the land that Wendy's using since 1989 until it was sold to Wendy.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Paul, just sorry to interrupt, if you would remind the audience about repetitive evidence.
Oh, yes. If anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application is going to offer similar evidence, repetitious evidence, there's no point to it because it'll be excluded anyway. It's just being repetition. That being said, Carrie Sweeney, do you have something different to offer?
Yeah, kind of, but I also wanted to clarify though...
Before you speak, sir, hand on, left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please stand in front of the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Carrie Sweeney. I live at 641 Low Road, Madison, North Carolina. I do join the property that is in discussion tonight.
Mm-hmm.
So basically, the road that's coming in, I'm the point guy, right in front. So, you know, one thing I wanted to clear up was, you guys were asking about the trees and just give more information about those boundary trees that grow up to 50 to 60 feet tall. They got a width from 12 to 20 feet wide, and they have an exponential growth rate per year of three feet per year. So for every year, this tree will grow three feet. And, you know, she's done an exceptional job. As far as traffic and everything coming in, never see anybody. Who she has now coming in for her Airbnb is very private back there, but it also will provide a lot more business. And I second the notion that Richard just commented on with supporting it.
Is your access to your property also an easement across Wendy's property?
No, sir. Nope.
Okay.
So the two driveways that come up, my house is on the front of Low Road, and the two driveways come up right beside it, my property.
Okay.
So that picture where she was looking back down towards the property, easements over here, and that other driveway's here, that's my end of, the end of my property and where Wendy starts.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Sweeney? All right, thank you very much. Two more speakers have signed up in support of the application. Ruth and Mike, is your testimony going to be repetitious?
I don't believe so. Maybe you should write a disclaimer.
Come on down.
It's not been heard so far.
Okay, come on down. As they say on the TV show, "Come on down."
Come on.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay. Stand in front of the podium and give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Ruth Jaeger. My address, I don't really know the address. It's across the street from 570 Low Road. We have property there. I only have the parcel number, but it's right there. You guys sent us a notice. So I have property there, as well as the thing I wanted to tell you about is myself and Mike Kennedy, we manage Floris Hope Blind Horse Rescue that is on Low Road. We get visitors coming from all over the place. We're promoting the area. It's really become popular in Rockingham County, and we cater to vets, first responders, and things like that. Having a place at Wendy's, which is right down the street, very, very close, is a godsend to us because it's going to give these people who come to visit our nonprofit Blind Horse Ranch, in fact, y'all ought to go. You could drive by and never know that they're blind. It's beautiful and it's a wonderful thing. I think that would be a great service for Rockingham County. There's no place to stay. Where do you go? There's people who have relatives that come in. Where do you stay? This might satisfy that need. And Rockingham County with our blind horse farm is really getting a lot of recognition, especially in Madison and areas like that. And people who come, we have a lot of donations. We're a 501(c)(3) corporation, and we've been there for 10 years, 11 years. And we'd like to have someplace for our veterans to come when they are stressed out and tired or are first responders. They don't want to stay in a hotel. They want to stay someplace quiet, get the feel of Madison. It needs help. Is that the same thing?
No, actually, that's very different. Any questions for Mrs. Jaeger, Ms. Jaeger? Well, thank you very much for your time.
I should have brought you a brochure. You really ought to come by and visit. It's a great place. Sam Page has been there. Okay, thank you very much. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mike?
No, sir, I can't talk that.
Okay.
You shouldn't meet the other person who owns it. He's the owner.
Okay. Next, we'll get to the speakers against the application, and I think it would probably be best if we start with Larry Plot. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please stand in front of the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lawrence Plot, and my wife, Maria, and I live at 230 Snoopy Drive, and that is a contiguous property to where Ms. Cheek is planning on putting the travel trailer park.
And what is it that you'd like the planning board to know?
Well, we, as I pointed out, we own adjoining property. I do not dispute her good character or her good intentions. My concern is not in regard to her character. It's for the law and for the impact that a trailer park will have on property values. I'm not aware of any instance where a trailer park positively impacted contiguous property values. A little research on that, but I couldn't find anything. I am concerned about the limited regulations of Airbnbs that will result in increased dust and noise, certainly potential liabilities related for trespass. I'm concerned about activities that are beyond the control of Ms. Cheek, including drug use in a known high-risk environment. I'm very concerned of safety and security for my family that will result from transient populations. Finally, I'm concerned about this petition for a special permit that I believe is a gross misapplication of the UDO in the interest of commercialization of the area. Such a permit will remain in place for years regardless of the owner. I've requested the presence of our attorney, Patrick Haywood, to this hearing, who will speak on our behalf. I did want to point out, just as a... Because Mr. Sweeney pointed out that the trees will grow to be 60 feet. When they grow to be 60 feet, they will also extend into the driveway. And so that has been an ongoing issue, although it was appreciated that Ms. Cheek planted the trees. It would have been great if we had discussed that on the front end, but it's just a side issue to the other points that I've just brought out here. Are there any questions for me?
Yes, I have several.
Please.
You mentioned a fear of drug abuse. Is that a known problem in your neighborhood?
I believe that the... First of all, yes, we have had some thefts in the past. The sheriff has notified us of some thefts and some drug abuse in that area. So yes, that can happen. However, I will stipulate that my particular concerns were relative to the transient populations that are going to be indicative of an Airbnb, which right now, Airbnbs are relatively, relatively new. They're like Uber, Waz 20 years ago, before they really got all the regulations associated with them. And as a result, Airbnbs are probably, are not as regulated. And as a result of that, it's a convenient location for drug use, to go out, have a nice trailer down below, nice, quiet, out of the way, on a farm. And I believe that that's conducive for that particular environment. So yes, we have had drug use in the area. Yes, I believe that as a result of this, it will only be a greater risk for that.
Isn't that speculating a little bit?
Well, it's only speculating insofar as if you actually believe that people are not going to be interested in partaking of drugs in a way-out-of-the-way area, in a little Airbnb, in a little trailer, out of the way, where they can get away and do things. It reaches a point where I'm not real sure we want to be so open-minded that our brains fall out. I mean, there is an issue. There's a potential issue. But you're right, it is a potential issue.
I have a follow-up. Do you have any data to support this assertion?
Excuse me?
Do you have any data on drug usage in...
I did not bring data with me. No, I did not.
In rural settings or in Airbnbs? You're making an assertion that...
Well, Airbnbs, you can, in fact, go on the Internet. It's very, it's not very difficult to do, to go on Airbnbs. And there have been issues with Airbnbs with drug use and abuse of people who are willing to take advantage of Airbnbs. Did I bring that data with me? No, I did not.
I just don't think it's a word I'm looking for.
Relevant?
I don't think we can generalize.
I'm sharing with you my concerns.
Yes, I understand.
If it's unsubstantiated, what it is, it's unsubstantiated with no real hard evidence to support that position.
Yeah, and that's what I'm getting at. What's, there's, you know, if there is an issue that we need to be concerned about in making our decision, if we had some data points, particularly in Airbnbs that are operated in rural areas, that would, I think that would be helpful for us in making our decision. But in the absence of that, I don't think we can, I don't think we can just take an assumption that there's going to be mass drug usage in this property necessarily.
Have you seen any, or since she's already been having Airbnb people resident at her place, have you had any increased concerns about safety, drug use, or any of that?
Concerns about safety, yes, but the reality from a drug standpoint, from any trespass, we have not had any issues. No, we have not.
Do you know if there's been an increase in DWI arrest or stops in the vicinity? Because that would also be a data point.
Yeah, that's something that, from a conventional standpoint, I'm not going to be privy to that information or have access to that. So no, I do not have that information.
It's public information.
Yep.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Plot?
I have one, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You mentioned traffic flow. I'm just curious, how many times you, your wife, or other family members or friends would come in and out of your driveway?
My driveway? Well, I guess we go in and out of our driveway four, five times a day.
So my, the question I have is if she's going to rent at the most three other campers, and they're there for just maybe the day or two or several, maybe they're in for a temporary job or whatever, they leave once, come back. How is that any different than the amount of times you all travel your way? I don't think it's going to create a whole lot of extra flow, at least that's my opinion. What's your thoughts?
Well, my thoughts is I'm still concerned about property values with a trailer park next door.
We can't speak to property values, though, right?
I am concerned about property values.
We don't have anybody here with the knowledge or the foresight or the expert opinion to draw on for that information, correct?
Yeah, we'd need, in order for us to consider that this application would, if granted, would cause your property value to go up or down, we would need some testimony from an appraiser.
Well, I consider myself an expert on my property. I'm pretty familiar with my property.
You don't understand what I'm saying. A licensed appraiser, you know, doing business in North Carolina, appraising properties and could show us market trends and evaluations of homes up and down that were affected by similar-type businesses. That's...
That burden is on me.
Yes, it is.
Okay. So I'd like to yield over to my attorney, please.
If that's your intention, sure. And your attorney's name is?
Patrick Haywood.
Mr. Haywood.
Thank you very much.
If you would, sir, please be sworn. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do, sir.
Thank you.
I utilize this, we usually call it a hell mode. Does this work?
Before you do, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Of course. My name is Patrick Haywood. I live at 3508 Two Oaks Drive, Greensboro, North Carolina. I'm the attorney for Mr. and Mrs. Plot.
Thank you.
I'm with the law firm of Cruthers and Roth.
I'm familiar with them.
Can I, how do I utilize this?
I don't believe that it's hooked up to be used.
All right.
Are you talking about the overhead projector? I didn't hear any requests from you that you wanted to use it, so... Or is that, is it capable of being used, Andy? Okay. I got a thumbs up.
Either that or we can just bring up your report, which... Oh, perfect, thank you. Really appreciate it. I'll try to be very brief, unlike most attorneys. You've asked some questions. I thought there were some good questions that were asked. I will differ from a legal perspective and try to point out to you a couple of problems with, I think, the decision that, at least some distinctions we heard between a mobile home park and this proposed travel trailer park. And the distinction is a really simple one. It was asked over here, what is the distinction between them? And the distinction is one is affixed to property and others are not. And we'll walk through both the recommendations of the board that specifically put in their recommendations that the, these structures, these trailers, these campers, whatever you wish to call them, could not be there for more than six months, which actually is a fairly long time for a trailer park, especially in light of the fact that the planning board themselves or staff actually said when asked, what's the difference between a travel trailer park that you're discussing here and a regular mobile home park? The answer, quite correctly, was that typically speaking, in a travel trailer park, the guest, the trailer, comes in and it leaves, and it must leave within 30 days. It is not affixed to the property. If it is affixed to the property with water and sewer and electrical, like these three, if not four, we have three that we know that will be there and soon may have four. So that is affixed to the property, the very same as a mobile home. And there are three of them, making them right within your own Page 64, which will go to an actual mobile home park, which you don't allow in this area. There is literally no distinction between them. So let me just point out a couple of areas here. I did have a number of questions for the applicant, but she was very straightforward in what she's going to do, and that is affix them to the property and they're never going to move. That's what she said. I was curious how she was going to move them after six months, but she made it very clear she's never going to move them, despite the fact that the planning board actually put in their recommendation, let's take a look at it, that they actually had to be moved within six months. let's take a look at it, that they actually had to be moved within six months. So I know that you have this in front of you, but let's just take a look, if we can. I assume this remains on. And do we need to zoom it in or out? How do I zoom it in and out? I don't want to mess up your thing. But if you show me, I'll do it from here on out. Okay. Yeah, perfect. And I think they've all got this. I want to make sure we're on the same-
We do.
Perfect. I want to make sure we're all on the same page, that this was from the actual planning department. And I've highlighted a few areas. Well, first of all, this is a special use permit for a travel trailer park. And if you can look down, they state, in the highlighted area I pointed out to you, the applicant intends to operate an Airbnb by utilizing vintage campers as guest rooms. In other words, she's going to do exactly 100% what she said she was going to do the first time, which was denied. I was at the first meeting, where you said, let's see the site plan. And I understand that the belief was that it was a legalese of why it was denied. It was not. I am the attorney who argued that case, and it's not legalese. It's because that use is not allowed. This use is even more not allowed. It's not even as close if the first one was. And we know that, because it's not an argument from me, it's actually an argument from staff that says, unlike rural guest establishment plan, which allows for permanent placement of the campers, which by the way, it didn't, that's Judge Bray's order, that you read into the record first, the travel trailer park option is non-permanent, limiting placement of campers up to six months. As proposed, these are not going to be there for six months. This is not debatable. It's not an attorney argument. It's right there. And it comes directly from the statute. And we heard, when questioned about, what's the difference, we were told that the difference in a travel trailer park is that the travel trailers are intended to come and go every 30 days. It does not matter who owns them. In a regular mobile home park, it is not uncommon for the mobile homes to be owned by a person who owns that park, and to rent them out, either by the week, or the day, or the month, but more typically, it's a month-to-month rental. That's what we've just established in my client's backyard, is a mobile home park with campers. One other thing, sort of a technical point I would make for you, is that you now have in front of you an opportunity to accept a special use permit that, the very words we heard a moment ago, will immediately have to have a variance, to make the 12-foot road go to 20-foot. So I would suggest to you, on that alone, you cannot approve a special use permit that already needs a variance. Sort of builds it into the cake, if you will. And I do want to point out, I don't know that it bears out, pointing just a couple of other little moments. I'm trying not to repeat myself. There is an issue with the site plan itself. I would commend you to take another look at it, that the actual creek runs through the septic area or septic field. I'm assuming we can put it up, if you like, but I know that you have it. Where that septic is located-
Hold on one second.
Yes, sir. Of course.
Where's the big one? Carrie, it was here.
You should be able to see it more clearly in your own copy. But as you see, this septic, which I'm assuming is either the Rockingham County requirements of the area that goes around it, or it's actually designated as a septic field. That part's not clear to me, but I imagine it's a field, a septic field. The actual creek adjoins it around its entire area, and it actually goes in at one area.
I would, I would like the planning board to understand that the septic, the environmental health experts, will only approve this septic field if it is acceptable and able to be approved. That will have to follow their regulatory expertise.
And has that been done yet?
It has not, because the special use permit hasn't been approved. This is an initial site plan.
So is this, is this a non-issue right now?
I consider it a non-issue unless, unless there is another expert that is saying that there is no other possible location for a septic field that could satisfy public health requirements.
Does that mean that this testimony with this particular point is irrelevant?
I think that the, the point is relevant in that, in that the actual development will be subject to environmental health regulation, to ensure that the septic system is properly installed, and in the right location. And you can make that a condition.
Does this, does it almost make it outside our jurisdiction at this point?
Yeah, we won't, I won't approve a septic, septic, actual septic system, and you won't be approving an actual septic system. You're just approving the general site, and whether it follows the development standards of a travel trailer park. And I can, I can address the six-month thing at another time. I don't want to interrupt you any more than that.
It looks to me like the drawing, the drawing I have, this one?
Yes, sir.
It looks to me like, if that squiggly line on the lower end of the septic field, that's the creek you're claiming it is? Is that, that's a creek? It looks like it's just outside the border of the septic field.
I'll leave that for your determination. I believe that you've gotten some advice that says it's something you don't need to worry about. And so I won't belabor the point. Just that the site plan itself appears, and I think I would be asking, is that septic field within the appropriate distance of that creek? At the very least, it is directly abutted to it.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty close, yeah.
Again, the experts will review that.
Yeah, we'd, I'd have to defer to environmental on that.
Just wanted to point out your own regulations, that in this area, and I know you have this RA manufactured, and we just spoke about this, but I wanted to point to your actual page, Page 64 of your ordinances, do not allow a mobile home park. There are other classifications of mobile homes that would be allowed, but not park. So, and when asked, how is this different? Because somebody was right. That's the right question. Once you learned that it was affixed, that was the right question. And we know that this is also not what was intended, because here's Page 140 of the same ordinances, which speak to recreational travel trailer parks, or recreational areas. And we know that it is to rent, trailer spaces shall be rented by the day, trailer spaces, not affixed trailers. So, it strikes me that we are, in fact, unfortunately, trying once again, maybe, maybe not once again, but this time, to try to figure out a way that Ms. Cheek can do on her property what she wishes to do. However, the whole reason that you have regulations is because Ms. Cheek can do anything and everything she wants to do on her property, as long as it is in conformance, and doesn't affect my clients. And you have determined, as a county, ahead of time, those things that you will and will not allow in certain areas. And those things that a property owner doesn't need to hire a lawyer and come make these arguments for. That you independently and individually, and I can tell, by the way, all of you are looking at me, even though I know that we're making a record, nobody's asleep, nobody's sneering at me, everybody's thinking. I can tell that. And you take your jobs very seriously. And your job is to protect Mr. Plot. Your job is also to allow Ms. Cheek to do whatever she wishes to do, as long as it does not impend upon Mr. Plot's rights. And you've already decided, as a county, that mobile home parks are not allowed. And when asked the question, it couldn't be differentiated. And to the extent that it was, the point was proven, that this is a mobile home park. So, oh, by the way, the COVID-19, I'll take any questions you have, of course, of me, but my client had his concerns about COVID-19. Airbnb's are routinely in the paper about COVID issues. I don't really want to be heard anymore about that, but I told my co-counsel, Rachel Decker, that I would at least mention it. I think you should decide this on the, the actual law, not, it seems like a lot of good people, well-intentioned and well-meaning. This has actually been a fairly, I go to a lot of these kind of meetings, and I thought everybody spoke well, and is well-meaning. My client is well-meaning, too. My client has the law and the ordinances on his side. Anybody have any questions of me?
I do, if that's possible.
Sure.
Can you suggest an alternate use, that you would name this type of use?
I would suggest you can't-
If it's not a rural guest establishment, and it's not a travel trailer park, and it's not a mobile home park, it is not-
It is, by definition, and by what you stated, it is in fact a mobile home park.
It is not-
And I understand your point is, if you've asked me a question, so you've got to let me answer it.
Yes.
Okay. I understand your point is, is that you're having a difficult time naming this, or putting it in some ordinance that'll work. And you, maybe everybody does, but you want this to work. Well, it doesn't work like this. If she wanted to do a travel trailer park, then she really would have designed a travel trailer park, one with pull-through sites, one that recreational vehicles pull up to, and they come in, and they do all of those sorts of things. This is not. It's a mobile home park. It is affixed to the property. It, these, these travel trailers do not have, as many of you may be familiar with, the actual septic containment system within the travel trailer or RV, that they then later pull to a dump station, or they take it home, or whatever they want to do, and they empty it. That's part of a travel trailer park. So no, ma'am, I don't have an answer, but I can tell you what it's not. It's not a travel trailer park by your definite, by your definition of what you said here, and by the definition of what you actually pointed to when you approved this.
Understand that the, my staff report is, what you are reviewing is what the ordinance states. And that six-month limit is not in your UDO.
Carrie, I have a-
And I, just one more, one more question. The, the definition of a mobile home is very different than the definition of an RV. Do you feel like these structures would meet the definition of a mobile home to, built to HUD standards?
Can you tell me what is different about a mobile home and this structure? Because I disagree with you. The definitions are not different. So now, let me put it out there for you. The difference is, once it is affixed to the property, and is capable of you living there, it doesn't matter, you know, how big or how little it is. You're not going to find any definition that says, a mobile home has a certain size, or a certain bedroom number-
It's not size-related. It's HUD standards that I'm talking about.
So this is a lesser standard?
HUD standard mobile home, which is why I did not interpret the use as mobile homes.
Okay. Well, I, this is why we disagree. And we're disagreeing openly. And I think by what you put in front of the board, and by the questions that you answered, you asked how they're different. You said, I wrote it down, I quoted you, that typically in a travel trailer park, they come and go, and not to exceed 30 days. Now, if that's not in an ordinance, and you, then you're just up here saying whatever. I don't believe that. I don't believe that. I believe it is in the ordinance.
Counsel, listen, I'm going to interject here. I'm going to think, I'm going to pull, I'm going to anchor back exactly what the board's mission is tonight. This can be a lot of speculation. We can argue back and forth as to where it fits, or where it may not fit. But what's in front of the board tonight is this application for this special use permit. And you have to weigh the evidence, determine whether these factors are met or not. And that's, that's the sole focus of this board. So I don't want the board to get distracted as to what their task is tonight.
So you would say that it's a legal purpose to make sure that something complies to begin with, with the ordinance?
The board has to weigh the evidence, and determine whether or not these factors are met.
All right. And so whether or not something clearly doesn't fall within it, why would someone ask her, what's the difference between this and a mobile home park, if you're not going to accept that?
Again, I'm going to go back to what the board's task is tonight, sir.
I'm just wanting to job.
Are there any other questions?
Can I have some clarification, please? Is this the purpose of a special use permit? Is to, is to figure out things that may fall outside the neat confines of a statute? Is this why we're here? Plus, you're stated.
The, the nature of special use permits with the capability of imposing conditions on the use are definitely, help a use that doesn't fit neatly into a, an ordinance otherwise. It also, special use permits are intended to mitigate circumstances that some uses may have on surrounding properties, that, that should be called out as, as potentially imposing different standards. But the, the, I want to stress the use of conditions as an allowable legal application of the granting of a special use permit. And please don't, if my, the attorney is, obviously has some disagreement with my, what I, in my professional recommendation as a planner, have recommended, so I don't want you to be distracted by that. If you, through that, through the lens that John just asked you to look at, through the UDO, the, whether the, the semantics and the, and the, my professional capabilities, set that aside, and just follow the ordinance.
I want to be clear, I wasn't questioning anyone's professional capabilities, but merely what your testimony was. And I repeated back what her testimony was. Ma'am, if I may, Ms. Talbott, I'd like to answer your question more fully. The purpose of the board, you asked the question about what is, what is the purpose of a special use permit? Is it to figure out where something fits? Well, the first question is, what is this zoned? It's zoned RA. This isn't allowed at all, under this zoning. Not at all. The only way we get there is a special use permit to begin with. So then what has to happen is, the applicant has to fall within the special use permit. Which I think the clear testimony today has been, it does not. It's an affixed trailer of multiples. It's a trailer park. It doesn't leave in 30 days, as staff said. It's not going to, as the applicant said.
I have a quick question.
Of course, sir.
Could she not store them under a shelter when they're not being used, and then move them back in as, as they're needed?
You know, I think there's a number of things. I thought maybe what she was going to do-
That way, they would be moved within the 60 days.
I thought maybe that's what she was going to do, to be candid with you, is, I thought maybe the idea was going to be that, after 60 days, or six months, or whatever it was, she was going to move them. And that was part of, I had a whole list of questions, sir. So I would suggest to you that I think that's a reasonable question, of what somebody might could do. And I wondered to myself, if the answer was going to be, yeah, that's what I'm going to do. I didn't mean to say, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm going to do that. The, the reason I think she wouldn't do that, even though that might be possible, you may very well be right, is it would not be commercially feasible. That's not what she wants to do. This site is not developed to have pull-through sites. It's not developed to store it somewhere. So to do what you've suggested, which may be okay, you would have to disconnect it all, tear it up, out of the ground.
That's, that's not how they work. That's not how they work. It's, it's very easily disconnected.
I think what you've said is possible. But that's not what the evidence has been, sir. The evidence has been, it's going to be affixed permanently, and not move, ever.
That is something you can condition into the-
Right. It could be a condition.
Well, everything, excuse me, everything addressed was fixed, right?
I'm sorry, sir.
I said, everything that was addressed is a fixed unit. The living quarters is permanent, the guests come and go.
Yes, sir. But that's not what the applica, that's not at all what the zoning says. It has nothing to do with the guest. Maybe that's your point. It talks about what's fixed, not whether guests come and go. I agree, she's saying the guests will come and go. I think they are. I mean, I think, I think she's right. That's what's going to happen, because she's going to work, she's going to do an Airbnb. But all of the ordinances speak to what happens to the actual object that's sitting there. It has to come and go, to Mr. Cardwell's point. It's possible she could have said that, but she, she didn't. Maybe she, maybe you're going to make that a condition.
Do you have any idea to say that, Ken? That I already knew that. I already knew that you-
Please, you'll get a chance for rebuttal. Mr. Haywood has the floor right now.
And I'll-
So can I, can I ask you a question?
Of course, sir.
So you indicated that, based on the suggestion, you know, that she moved them into a storage place for a while, and moved them every six months, and put them in storage as they were being used or not being used. Your concern in raising- Your concern in raising and representing your client is the concern about property value, drugs, uh, and other safety concerns and so forth. If we were to do that, would that assuage your, your client's concern? Or are we still at a, or is there still a concern that, that whatever adjustments we make to fit the regulations, or the UDO, that, that's, that your client's still not gonna be happy because the issues are not whether the travel trailers are moving, or or being stored, or how it's being, if there are issues around property value and so forth?
So, let me, let me be clear. I don't think the two, one has the, anything to do with the other one. So, I would agree with your point, that whether they're moved or not moved would not alleviate his concerns, and the sake of not being repetitive, and because I really can't offer evidence. As a lawyer, I'm not actually here to offer evidence. This is the first time I've ever been sworn in. I'm just supposed to be a lawyer, representing the client and talk about legal concerns. My concern is a legal one. This is a mobile home park, you were asked the difference, or someone over here asked the difference, and it couldn't have been, I mean, the record couldn't be clearer, that it's a mobile, it's a mobile home park.
But you're bringing the argument forward on behalf of your client because of their concerns about the other issues.
They are concerned about.
So, you're saying, you're saying they're not related.
No, they, they are concerned about those things.
But it's not related to your bringing forth evidence about the law?
I'm, first of all, I'm not bringing forth evidence, and my, my point is not to repeat what he said, and they, of course, are related. But whether or not this is legal, and within the statute, and within the special use permit, is totally different than what all the neighbors' concerns would be or not. If it can't be done under the statute, under your ordinances, then it can't be done. That's all. And I've, I've simply tried to streamline an argument to you that has pointed out, from what you've heard here to date, from what you've heard here to date, it doesn't fit within a special use permit, it doesn't fit within the statutory ordinance.
Mr. Chair, please excuse me for being devil's advocate here, but if the point of this proceeding is a quasi-legal hearing, why, why is this not evidence? Why are you not, why are you not presenting evidence?
I, I can answer that also, where I think I'm gonna go back to my original point. This board needs to hear evidence and make a determination based on the material evidence, whether substantial, whether it plays any role in meeting these factors for the UDO. You, as a board, have to make that decision.
Thank you.
Whether there's substantial evidence to meet or not meet these factors. That's your task.
I guess the reason that an attorney gets hired to stand here is because that's what attorneys get hired to do, is to point out to you the law, and to look at it, and spend hours and hours looking at your own ordinances, and looking at the law. And I am allowed, on behalf of my client, to stand up here and tell you that this does not meet the law. Now, you have every right to just go right ahead and do this in any way you wish to, and then I will be stuck with my same remedy that I had before, which is to go to a Rockingham County Superior Court judge and ask them, ask them, does this fit within the law? Remember, once this gets away from you, the evidence is sealed. I don't know if you've ever thought about it that way. No one presents any further evidence. The evidence is, how does the evidence fit within the law? And the evidence you heard.
Well, let me, let me, Mr. Haywood, let me, let me say this. We're not done hearing evidence yet.
Yes, sir.
Our, Ms. Cheek has an opportunity for rebuttal. Your sticking point seems to be the fact that these are permanent, and on that basis, do not meet the UDO.
That is the easiest point to make, sir.
Okay. Now, if those trailers are moved, then I think your argument is moot.
Uh, except for the point, it would've been a much harder argument to point out that according to the trailer part, they're supposed to be movable. That's what the designation is. That's why staff told you.
We can clear that up in, in Ms. Cheek's rebuttal then.
All right, but just so we're clear, I'm not conceding that this is, you're working around to try, it sounds like we're working around to get to a solution where what's being proposed does not fall within that special use permit. These aren't travel trailers, these are fixed property. They're, they're a mobile home. Mobile homes come in on wheels too. Man, I know you know that.
Well, if they're moved periodically within the provisions of the ordinance, then they're not permanent.
I, I guess we'll ask ourselves that. I mean, that question was raised. If they're designed to not be moved, but are moved periodically, are they mobile homes now? Is this a mobile home park? If you owned a mobile home, and you decided you wanted to leave, you can unaffix it, and you can move it. Does that make it a mobile home park versus now a travel trailer park? The point is, it's not designed, she's not designing something where she is going to rent spaces, like your ordinance says. It says rent spaces, not trailers. I showed you that part that's in your ordinance, rent spaces, not trailers. She's gonna rent trailers. There, there's many complex issues here, it just got a lot simpler for me when she said they're going to be affixed, and that made it clear they're never gonna be moved.
Any other questions for Mr. Haywood?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, Paul, the, the, a recreational vehicle or a camper would never meet the requirement for a mobile home. Every mobile home park has to, every individual mobile home has to be permitted and allowed in a mobile home park. And these, um, structures, the, the, the RV, the camper, would not meet the requirement of a mobile home, and would not be allowed. So, this, this could not be a mobile home park with the types of vehicles that the applicant is suggesting to use.
Carrie, can you say that the, the last part again, about the mobile homes are, clarify that they are permitted separately? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
A, a mobile home park is, is a site for individual mobile homes to be permitted and allowed, and each mobile home has to get a building permit in order to be placed there. So, these, um, RVs, these campers would not be permitted as allowed in a mobile home park, by the definition of the, we're talking more about the, the building. I also wanted to answer your question, that this first line of, um, objectives and purposes of a special use is permitting special uses adds flexibility to the zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
Ms. Cheek, do you have rebuttal comments to make? Please come forward.
Okay, um, the first one, I'd like to, so Airbnb, I was staying in Airbnb several year, like, for several years I've rented. When I go on vacation, I use Airbnb. They've actually been in, in business for 14 years, and the people that I've had stay, so the other thing about Airbnb, this is Mr. Plott's concerns, is that, um, they are screened through Airbnb, and I actually had, I read reviews on these folks before I ever allowed them to stay at my place. And so, I've not even as much had a person smoke a cigarette on my property since all the people that have been coming. And they've all been very, they've been great guests, they've, they know where the, I, I set the property lines, like, they know where the property lines are, that is in my check-in instructions, so they know where the boundaries are on my property. And I live alone, I've lived alone for quite a few years, and I've not once been nervous about anybody I've had there, and they, they actually, like, I work shift work, so I work 24-hour shifts, and so, you know, I've had people stay when I've been at work, and, and that's what Airbnb is built upon. It's built upon neighborhood trust and community, and that's the reason people like it, other than, like, staying at a hotel or something. It's just a lot more personable, and it's, it's more like having a neighbor over. So, that was the two things I wanted to talk about with, what Mr. Plott said. Okay, so the things that the lawyer was saying, now, I was told about this permit, that this was for, this was a six-month, that I could only rent. The Airbnb, the vintage camper could only be used for, renting space for six months, and I would have to either close them or move them. And at first, I didn't know that I wanted to do that, because I'm investing a lot into fixing this, but then I thought, it's better than not being able to do it. So, I had, they were gonna be set up as not a permanent, as far as, like, never being able to move. I could pull up to them and hook my car, or my truck to them, and pull them away at any time. They were gonna be set up movable. I don't know what, I really am not sure what it is he's looking to say, and I did not say that. When I said they're gonna be fixed on my property, I meant that people were not gonna be bringing them in and out, that they were just gonna be mine. But I was fully prepared to not have them available for guests for the whole 365 days. I knew that was part of the, you know, the stipulation. And as far as, like, mobile homes, these, you know, um, you know, a mobile home has to have, like, a real mobile home that people live in permanently, they've gotta have, like, a certification, like, you know, they function as a stick-built house, but they're a mobile home, and they had to have a cer, a certification, I actually wrote it down, by the Department of Housing and Community Development. And my vintage campers don't have to have any kind of certification like that, and plus, mobile homes don't have holding tanks on them, like campers. He was wanting to know the difference, so I just thought I'd throw that out there. And as far as the septic, that septic is a long ways from that creek. It looks like it's closer, just that, the area that, that he is telling you is highlighted down there, that is the recreational area. The septic is a small area just down below the campers, because the, um, I had already gained a septic permit with the last, um, permit that I had, so, um, they had already been out and laid out my septic yard and everything, and then went through that. So, it had been approved once before, but I'm sure I'll have to go back through and have it approved again. But I did have, you know, it was cleared, it was not anywhere near the creek, just to let you know that part. And, is there, I think I've rebuttled this. Yeah. And I did have the, Jason Julian out from the DOT was out, and I got a permit from him. He looked at my driveway, and I actually, the only thing that he required for the guests coming in was that I cement a apron at the end of my driveway that was, like, 16, I think it was, like, 10 by 16, or something like that, and I did that, and that was the only requirement by the DOT that, um, when they inspected my driveway, just, I didn't say that in the beginning, but. And I have more pictures if y'all wanna see them.
No, I don't think we need to see any more pictures, Wendy.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Any further questions for Ms. Cheek? Yes, James.
So, counsel mentioned Airbnb having a, a known issue with, um, let's just say, less-than-stellar folks staying there. If I heard you correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, you said that Airbnb vets the folks, and that you also can vet them, so they actually go through two chances of being declined, and if you're looking at reviews, you're, I'm guessing from what you said, you're looking at reviews to determine if it's somebody that you want to rent to. So, you have an option to decline after Airbnb approves them?
I have declined before, yes. And, and, and the reviews, that's what the reviews are for, so the host gets reviewed, and then we review our guest, and, and, and everyone uses those reviews to know whether they want to let people stay, and also, um, they don't get to that point. Like, I've actually had Airbnb not send people through because of their first, what they put them through, and then, um, and then I've declined some, and I decline them because, one, they, I don't feel like they're on, upfront with me, or they won't give me the information I asked for, so.
That's good.
You know, I set that forth, and then, you know, and then I set forth, like, I set my calendar, if I don't want people to rent, I, I can block calendar, you know, I, I control, that's what I like about, is I can, I control it. You know, it's not like somebody going to a website and just booking without me knowing anything, yeah.
And just a quick follow-up to counsel, also referred to Airbnbs with the, uh, the potential for, you know, inappropriate activity. Do you have any knowledge of that in or around your property, or your experience with Airbnb?
I personally have not ever experienced that, and I've, I've got several friends and family that use Airbnb, and I use Airbnb, I've traveled all over the United States with it, and I've never experienced it, personally, yeah.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes.
Ms. Cheek, you're not gonna have any, you don't say having any trouble to hook to those trailers and moving them, and storing them while they're not in use?
No, sir, they're gonna be kept in a way that they can be moved for repairs, or any time they need to be moved.
Okay, and then one of the other issues was the widening the road to 20 feet. Do you foresee any issues with getting that done?
Um, that could possibly be, and is, my driveway is, like, um, half, probably three-quarters of a mile long. That was one of the things I was gonna talk about, because the, the DOT, or the, the Rockingham County DOT had come out and looked at it, and for what I was gonna use it for, it was just gonna be three cars, like, basically three cars coming in, and no, and I've got numerous places for people to pull off and meet, but, I mean, that would be, it's not that I, I mean, I could do it, but that would probably where all my money would go to on it.
Has, has DOT given you any indication at what point, I mean, you're talking about, we are looking at no more than three to four.
Right.
Campers, 'cause that's what you ask about. Does, did DOT indicate at what point you would have to widen the road? How many cars would need to come in?
No, when they, when they, he looked at it, it was according to y'all's, the original plan, um, but if I had, you know, progressed to something bigger, I'm sure it would be more necessary. But as it stands, my, I, I just put a, built a bridge across my creek, um, that, for vehicular traffic, and it's 12 feet, but the road is, like, some places it's up to 14 feet wide, so it's pretty, it's a pretty wide drive.
Yes, James.
I have a two or three questions. In talking with Jason Julian, was any thing brought up about the being compliance, that the road had to be made a 20-foot width?
No, he never said that to me. I'm not, he, he never told me it needed to be 20-foot. But I did not show him the travel trailer park.
Right. Concerning, concerning the facility.
He, he looked at it as a rural guest establishment. I mean, just to be, like, I mean, that's. I mean, just to be like, I mean, that's, I, I did that when I had the rural guest establishment, and his only recommendation or his only requirement was the, the, the concreted area at the end of my drive.
I want to point out that the DOT would not have, they don't have required standards for a driveway of this type because they aren't taking it over as a public driveway. So the only standards that would be applicable are those in our development ordinance. And what, what Ms. Cheek is referring to is a driveway permit that NC DOT would be granting for the, the connection between the drive and the public road.
Would these travel trailers be set up on jacks or have they been on permanent block foundation? Would the wheels be removed?
I did not plan on removing the wheels. That takes away from the vintage camper itself. I mean, the whole purpose of it is to, is, you know, I mean, this is something that's new and big all over you. If you look them up, there's a bunch of places all over the United States that's got vintage camper stays. If I take the, the wheels off, then I'm taking away from the vintage camper itself.
What about the way it's mounted?
Um, yeah, you would have to, you would, you wouldn't mount it, but you would have to set it up like if you were setting it up at a, if I was taking it camping, you know, I'd put triangle.
Would it be on jacks?
Jack, like a.
Oh, you want to be able to bounce up and down.
But would it be on jacks or on block foundation?
Jack, it's probably like jacks or the, the, I've got, right now, what I use on the one that I've been using is the triangle jacks. It's.
I notice on most mobile home parks, you've got to have a permanent foundation, permanent skirt. You're talking about vintage wheels. You don't have any covering around it?
Uh-uh. No, because I've got my.
Not required for, under this.
I mean, my, my tires are even vintage, I mean, they look like, got the vintage look and stuff, so it was just part of the look of it. It would not be quite the same if I started doing the other things.
Okay, thank you.
That is another point to the, why these would not be allowed in a mobile home park because they would require skirting. Skirting and other attributes.
Carrie, am I correct in stating that Jason Julian and DOT, that would be, depending on what the board actually does, let's just say hypothetically, if it were approved, all that is going to a technical review committee and they're going to have to look at the driveway. Is that correct or is that incorrect?
The, this particular case would not be required to, not be required to go to TRC while I have sent it to several of the TRC members, but you can certainly require that this goes to TRC review.
I mean, but DOT.
Before the, before the development is actually, takes place.
Got you. But DOT, Jason would make the recommendation based on what it's being used for, right?
Right, and he would, he would be, as part of the TRC, he would make the same recommendation as he would, as an individual, to an individual.
Any other questions for Ms. Cheek? Thank you very much. Mr. Plot or Mr. Haywood, any last rebuttal on your part?
I, I just have a comment. The section is travel trailers parks or recreational, non-permanent vehicles. And then parenthetically, it's talking about like tents, it includes tents. So everything in this section suggests something less than six months. It's disturbing that the board is saying, oh, well, let's play a game and let's pull the carts, pull them out and move them back in every six months. I don't think that's what the law is intended for, and I could be wrong, and, and maybe it is, but I don't think that's the way we want to interpret our laws. And my only other concern is that I know two people, two people that have gone to the planning board that are building, that were building houses, and they asked if they could put a camper up while they built the house on the property, and they came to the planning department and they were refused because you don't allow campers. I am absolutely baffled that now we're considering six months for campers. So I, I just want to share.
Well, there is a classification in the UDO that covers travel trailers.
That's what I just read to you.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, I understand that. That's right here.
Yeah.
And, and, and.
Individuals.
When someone comes and is asking, hey, I'm building a house, can I put this camper here? And it's going to be here for six months, and that gets denied, but we're talking about doing exactly that with three or four in this environment. Oh, as long as we pull them out and scoot them back in the same day, or, you know, is that all that we have to do? Just pull them out and then pull them back in the next day? I, I don't know what the rules are here because they sure aren't spelled out, but this right here says it's non-permanent vehicles. And to me, non-permanent.
Well, you know, Mr. Plot, I don't think these things are going to have heat or air conditioning in them, so I sort of see them as seasonal.
I'm just.
Who wants a, who wants to spend the winter in a trailer with no heat?
Well, they were just talking about some woman up in Seattle that had set up a tent for the last six months because she wanted to get away. So I, I don't know. I don't know. It wouldn't be me, so I'm, I'm, I'm with you on that. I like heat. But, but I don't think that's what we're deciding here.
I would like to get a yurt.
I'm done unless there are any more questions for me.
No, so you, you.
Thank you to the board for listening.
Sure. Mr. Haywood.
Thank you. And I will be extremely brief unless there are questions. I think this is all.
That's what you said the last time.
We've got a lot of questions. Don't ask any questions, just agree with me, we'll be all set. On page 139 of your ordinances, in all sincerity, there were some questions about what does DOT require about a 20-foot right-of-way or 20-foot wide path? That's not a DOT, as correctly stated, that's not a DOT requirement, that's this special use permit requirement. On page 139 of your special use permit, and it is in your package, if it is two-way, then it is required to be, the roadway is two, is two-way, no parking on the sides, it's supposed to be 20 feet. The, the map you've got that she drew, if you look at it, you'll see it clearly says ingress and egress on it. And that's why, at the very beginning of this, planning said to you that if you approved this, it would have to be subject to a variance. That's where the word variance came from, is you would be approving a special use permit that is given to you right now, right now requires a variance. You can't approve it without a var, you could approve it, but it is a direct violation of the ordinance. So it's not a DOT issue, it's an ordinance issue. And you would agree with me on this, I assume.
You've said several things, so I'd rather not respond.
I understand. Page 139, for your own reading, it's got to be 20 feet.
That's in the, those are the development standards that are in your packet?
And it's also attached to planning's recommendation because they actually pulled out the only two pages for, so it's only, it's in the only two pages for the, that address this particular special use permit. It's got to be 20 feet. It's labeled as 12, she said it's 12. Unless there's any questions for me, it's, it shouldn't be approved.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make.
Rather than variance, can it be a condition?
I would, I feel like, based on the result of the last appeal of the decision, that it would be, it would be safer to, to require a variance, the variance process. And if you, if you recommend approval of the special use permit conditioned upon, the permit will not be granted until, until the variance is granted. And I, I don't, is there any more clarification on that? The ability to use the conditioned upon, it won't be approved?
Well, I, you know, conditioned or not, I think what, what the board has to look at is, is the black letter language of the UDO and whether or not to grant this permit, whether or not the condition, whether or not the requirement is met based on the evidence. And that's.
This is from the UDO.
I'm just, I'm wondering if that's, if Carrie's not, Carrie's got a point, it's, yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's more in the.
Discussion.
I think the, the 20-foot requirement, as Carrie said, is better handled in the permitting process, to my mind, anyway. Am I, am I?
That's exactly what.
Yeah, say that again, because.
You, you couldn't finally approve a special use permit that needs a variance, you could only conditionally approve. And if you want to, you conditionally approve the special use permit based on the variance. I mean, I've, and I've had a lot of experience with that type of approval.
It's like, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? The special use permit or the variance?
That's why, that's why the use of the conditional approval is, allows that sort of flexibility.
Okay, so, members, members, attention please. If, if a motion is made to approve this, one of the conditions has to be that the permit can't be issued until a variance is secured. Understood?
You're just talking about the road width, correct?
Right. Variance for the road width.
And it's the variance for the road.
Any other discussion?
I'll just make, I'll just make a comment, and this really is just kind of for the record, but I believe our, the potential, potential UDO that we're currently working on addresses this a little better, but the one we're working off now is.
Well, unfortunately, the newest version of the UDO hasn't been adopted yet, so we're stuck with what we have.
Correct. And what I expressed earlier is I hope you won't confuse my interpretation of an ordinance with your job of reviewing evidence to, I think there's two different things happening.
It's not, I didn't say it was a good one. The dictator here.
Oh, I'm buried in the papers here. Oh, here it is. Did you get a copy of this with the new?
I did not.
If you're going to make a motion, that's what it has to be. Any other discussion, last call? If not, now is the time for a motion.
Ms. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, please. The planning board has reviewed the special use permit and adopts the following statements as required by the Rockingham County UDO and NCGS number 160D-701 and 160D-705. After considering, after considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plans and UDO, the planning board approves case number 2021-08. This action is consistent with adopted Rockingham County land use plan. Number two, after reviewing the competent material and substantial evidence in the record, the board makes the following findings for the four conclusions to approve the special use permit. That the user development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated as to maintain or promote public health, safety, and general welfare. The board finds would the approval of this permit impose significant harm to the neighbors and surrounding community? No, the use would not. And that the use or development complies with all required regulations and standards of this ordinance. The board finds that the proposed use is allowed in a residential protected zoning district if a special use permit is approved, that the conditions of the special use permit will ensure the development meets or exceeds all requirements and goals of the existing UDO, and that the Rockingham County permitting and inspections department will ensure that the structures and site meet or exceed all state and local standards for construction and design. That the user development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated as to maintain or enhance the value of contiguous property, or that the use of development is a polar necessity. And the board finds that will the proposed business be compatible or exceed the quality of existing developments in the neighborhood and have similar impacts to its surrounding building types? Yes, that the use or development conforms to the general plans and land use and development of Rockingham County is embodied in the chapter in the Rockingham County UDO. The board finds the special use permit supports the policies and guidelines of the rural transaction, transition land class and that the intended purpose of the agricultural zoning distance, district. We would like to impose the following conditions. That no single camper can be affixed or parked in a space for more than six contiguous months, and that the permit cannot be issued without the variance for the driveway until the variance for the driveway is approved.
Is there a second to that motion? Motion has been made and seconded to approve the application for travel trailer park recreational non-permanent vehicles on the Cheek property in Rockingham County. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Okay, I'm counting four, is that correct? One, two, three, four. All those opposed, like, sign. The motion carries by a vote of four to three. Next item on the agenda is old business. Do we have any old business? Do we have any new business?
We, the Board of Commissioners has on their May 17th agenda, a week from today, to adopt the land use plan.
I'll be at the meeting.
Yeah, good. That would be, that would be very helpful, that it will be a public hearing and they may have questions, so that would be helpful. Thank you, Paul. The UDO should be adopted in June, there's still some work to be done. The biggest new business, however, is that you won't be seeing me after tonight. I'm leaving employment with Rockingham County to, to take a, another position up in Franklin County, Virginia. And I've really, really enjoyed working with this board and have seen you mature a lot, quite a bit, from when I started here, and to, to watch you learn process and mature in the process through Paul's guidance has been really a pleasure for me.
Thank you.
One of the, the first questions I asked is to, for them to tell me about the board. What's the board, what's the, what's the planning, the planning commission like?
Carrie, can I just say thank you very much for all your help and support, and you have been just fantastic to answer our sometimes uneducated questions and, and keep us on track. Some of us, some of us has to be kept on track, myself included. And I really appreciate all that, all your wisdom and knowledge, and you will be sorely missed.
It's not a, it's not an easy, it, it wasn't an easy decision. I joke, I joke around because Tim went there, you know, and, and after he left, there was a, well, there's a, sort of a long story, but I like to joke that it's hard to find a good planner, so. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. It's not the, Philip is crying.
Yeah, I wish you the best.
Thank you. And the, the department will be in good shape, we're talking. And the, the department will be in good shape, we're talking about a transition, a transition period, some, perhaps a potential contracted service while, while a permanent planning board, or a permanent director is hired. Some very good guidance and, and procedures left behind on my part, and, and with Tim and Emily's help. So we'll be.
One last question, is there a meeting date set for the UDO subcommittee?
There is not. I had the discussion with subcommittee members today, we're talking about, we're talking about a date and the necessity for that meeting.
I may get up with Charlie Hall then at the next meeting and see what we can do about pushing that forward.
That's a good idea. And Charlie and Kevin.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. No opposition, the meeting is adjourned.